Make sure your mics are on, guys.
Need a red? Red means go.
Good evening and welcome to the October...
One-two degree challenge.
On the right side, the volume's there.
Yeah, I think Paul already signed it. I don't know if she wanted it.
Right, see if he's willing to give it up.
What?
Did you give score?
They lost one. They lost two-one.
Okay, Barry, you want to give that a whirl on the mic?
Testing. One-two, testing. Tracy, how are we?
Much better.
Earphone jack was not...
Taking it from the top. Good evening and welcome to the October 16th, 2018 business meeting of the Council of the Borough of Ringwood. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed on Channel 77 throughout the week. Adequate notice of this business meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Law, PL 1975, Chapter 231, setting forth the time, date, place, and purpose of this business meeting by Consent Agenda Resolution Number 2018-14, adopted January 1, 2018, through a legal notice published in the Suburban Trends issue of January 7, 2018, and through notices emailed to the following named newspapers and posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on January 3, 2018, The Suburban Trends and The Bergen Record. Please silence all your electronic devices during the meeting. Nicole, can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Bolton?
Here.
Davison?
Here.
Goretty?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Here.
Council members Noonan?
Here.
O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Spear?
Here. Also present: Borough Manager, Director of Department of Public Works, Scott Heck; Acting Municipal Clerk Nicole Langenmeyer; and Borough Attorney Richard J. Kleemack. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda, as always, are Proclamations and Presentations. And this being the month of October, that must mean Mr. Jason Okun and the Hunger Walk folks want to come and describe to you the Hunger Walk that will be held in early November.
Pardon, Mike Tush, our Tush is... But we want to address the public. Tracy, will be in the right place?
Turn the mic towards you.
If I could actually see you anywhere where you go, so...
Thank you. Good evening. Five minutes only, guys. But we have visuals. Good evening, I'm Jason Okun. I'm the coordinator for the Ringwood Hunger Walk. This is Ray McCarthy. He's the treasurer for the Ringwood Hunger Walk for the past twenty-odd years.
That's you.
The Ringwood Hunger Walk is actually a 501-3C nonprofit. Its mission is to raise money for the local branch of the Center for Food Action. And that's what this Hunger Walk is about. It's our... It is the fundraiser that we have. What we'd like people to do is get an envelope, a walker envelope, a donor envelope. We don't do it by mile. We just ask you to get an envelope and ask for donations, preferably checks made out to Ringwood Hunger Walk. We also take cash, we take change, everything else, and raise money over the course of the next couple of weeks. And bring it on November 4th to the Lakeland High School track. That's where we are this year. The walk is a symbolic walk. In previous years, we had people walk up a rocky road... a rocky trail in Shepherd Lake. But we're at the high school track this year, so it's a smooth walk if you want to walk. You don't have to walk. The most important part of the walk is when you go around amongst your friends or amongst your coworkers and ask them for donations. And the rest of the walk is from your car in the parking lot on November 4th to the table where Ray and others are going to be counting. That's the most important part of the walk. Bring the money. And why the emphasis on money? We get a lot more using money. We are part of the community food bank. Most... Actually, most food pantries are here in North Jersey. And for every $1 that we bring, we get $9 worth of surplus food, donated food. And, I mean, we collect packaged foods throughout the year. But November 4th, we'd like people to bring checks so that for the rest of the year, we can provide more food for our clients at the Center for Food Action. Anything? Okay. Any questions? Any questions, folks? Okay.
Has the Center for Action...
We always have customers. That's been the position. We're doing well. However, periodically, this is... We're always missing some things. Certain items are missing. But we're functioning and taking care of the clients. And money, brought in extra money specifically for our local food pantry is very, very helpful.
How should I write off the check?
Ringwood Hunger Walk. And that is it. Any other questions?
Yeah, quick question. My understanding is when you get cash, you can actually purchase more with the money that you get than we can as individuals by shopping for food ourselves. So giving cash gives double the food.
I know.
Nine times.
By ninefold. Wow, that's quite a... So cash is the way to go.
Will there be entertainment?
What's that?
Will there be entertainment?
Oh, I'm so sure. Oh, yes. Spare parts band is providing entertainment there at the high school track on November 4th. Oh, I'm so sorry. Tracy and her husband and her friends are going to be there. That's her other persona.
I assume she never speaks up otherwise, so I knew she had to.
Okay, if you would like to run around, town-run around, go get those people who contributed to their daughter's Girl Scouts and their son's soccer and go get them back. Well, this is our community's program. And, Gus?
I've already got mine started. We're doing it with Global Banker this year.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Jason, thank you, Jason.
And every year, there's always a number of council members who go to attend the Hunger Walk. One of us will read this proclamation, but I'll just go through it now. Whereas representatives of the Houses of Worship in Ringwood have coordinated the Ringwood Hunger Walk for 20 consecutive years, and whereas the Ringwood Hunger Walk is supported by many individuals and organizations, including the Ringwood Chamber of Commerce, the Knights of Columbus, Lakeland Regional High School Leap, and Lakeland Regional High School National Honor Society, and whereas the aim of the Ringwood Hunger Walk is to raise awareness of hunger here in Upper Passay County and raise funds to help these families with proceeds donated to the Ringwood branch of the Center for Food Action, and whereas the Ringwood Hunger Walk will take place on Sunday, November 4, 2018, at 1:00 PM at Lakeland Regional High School, Wannacue, New Jersey. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Municipal Council of the Borough of Ringwood hereby proclaims Sunday, November 4, 2018, as Ringwood Hunger Walk 2018 Day in the Borough of Ringwood in recognition and support of the hundreds of walkers who want to end hunger one step at a time and help achieve the goals and needs of the Center for Food Action. Mr. Okun, thank you very much, you and your committee, for all you do for the town. Next order of business is the approval of minutes. Nicole, do we have minutes for approval this month?
Yes, September 18, 2018. All were present.
All were present at the meeting of September 18?
So moved.
Mr. Noonan?
Second.
Mr. Bolton? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Goretty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Council members Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is general public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the mayor and council, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments brief and non-repetitive.
Good evening. Paula Tedesco, 95, Upper Lakeview Avenue. I have concerns about the traffic in town. Couple of weeks ago, I was trying to get out of the CVS parking lot. I could not make a left-hand turn. I had to make a right, turn around, come back. The traffic was horrendous. And yesterday, I believe, there were three accidents on Skyline Drive. And I just am very, very concerned about it. Is there... Has it been looked at in terms of, could we have a light by the shopping centers or something? Because I've witnessed a couple of accidents myself, and I haven't been in town that long, a few years. But it's not a good situation. And then we're talking about, you know, bringing more, you know, tourism, business, whatever, attracting people to Ringwood. We can't handle it. Were there any traffic studies or anything being done or proposed?
If you...
Yeah, there's been some traffic studies done by the county. We've also contacted the county several times over the last several months about the Skyline Drive corridor and about the traffic on Skyline Drive. So we're looking at alternatives. It being a county road, it's something that's really their responsibility. But I guess as the council develops their plan for what they're going to do in the future, obviously, traffic is something they'll take into consideration.
So the county is responsible for safety?
It's a county road, so everything that happens on the county road is their responsibility. We've had three accidents yesterday on Skyline Drive, and ironically, we've had several over the last couple of months. So the chief and our borough engineer has contacted the county about the Skyline Drive. And today, you know, we had three yesterday along the same spot.
I know, that's ridiculous.
So a couple of years ago, they did some high-friction surface up there. They've done some milling up there. I noticed that Chuck Silverstein got back to us today when we sent him yesterday's police reports. So our engineer and our police department are following up.
Great, great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Robin Kennedy, 310 Lakeview Avenue. There are political signs at the entrance where you turn in to go to Skylands Manor on Slutzburg Road, which is interesting because in the last federal national election, there were Republican signs on public roadways which stayed up until Gottheimer signs got put up, and then they all came down because apparently there's a rule that they're not allowed to be up. So I'm thinking, if you're going to enforce that rule, you should enforce it regardless of the party. And that... Those signs have been up for quite a while because I've driven by there quite a few times. I could just put a Menendez sign out there, and then I guarantee it'll be gone in about 10 minutes, and then the other one will go too. But maybe you can do it. Thank you.
Motion to close. Second is O'Keefe. Roll call on closing public.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Noonan? Council Davison?
Yes.
Goretty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Council members Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. There being no full business, we move straight on into new business, introduction of ordinances. Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can I have a motion to read 2018-14 by title, please?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please, for reading by title?
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Goretty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Council members Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
An ordinance amending Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 720, Stop Intersections of Revised Ordinances of the Borough of Ringwood to Create a Stop Intersection. I'll read a resolution and you could vote on it. Any discussion among yourselves. Resolved that Ordinance Number 2018-14 be introduced and further that the municipal clerk being is hereby authorized and directed to publish a copy of the said ordinance in the official newspaper of the municipality. The second reading in public hearing will be held on November 28, 2018, at 7:30 PM at the Municipal Building. It could be a motion, second, any discussion?
We have a motion to introduce ordinance 2018-14?
So moved.
Mr. Noonan? I'm sorry, who is second?
I'm second.
Mr. Martucci? Okay, any discussion? Mr. Heck, can you take us through what is exactly going on here?
Yeah, attached is a letter from the engineer, but essentially, we received some requests for changing the stop signs at the Erskine Road, Maple Road intersection. They... Currently, it's in the ordinance for a four-way stop. It's not been a four-way stop since I've been here, but that's what it was on the ordinance books. So they were going to put a stop sign as you come out of the Little Beach for the local folks. You'll be stopping there at the top of the hill, and you'll be stopping at Maple across the street, and the Erskine Road, Lakeview Avenue will be the thorough street. So that's what this ordinance actually does, that we can put stop bars up instead of the yield signs that are there. And that's essentially what you do. Anytime you have to do, change the structure, you have to look at the ordinance and see what it says and revise the ordinance accordingly.
I thought we had to give permission from the state.
Not for a local road for this. It goes through the police department, and this comports with the state regulations. So if you're changing from a yield to a stop, you don't have to do that. There's a guideline that Jeff and the engineers follow, so whatever...
Down at Skyline by Canterbury in Skyline Lakes Drive, we've been asking for a long time.
Yeah, the chief and the engineer don't recommend that one because it's a straightaway street, and to have a stop in the middle of a straightaway street doesn't meet the specs. But we could certainly revisit it again.
I feel bad following that, but I wanted to thank Jeff for moving so quickly on it and addressing the feedback both there and Cup Saw and those intersections. It's greatly appreciated.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Goretty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Council members Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2018-192, whereas the Chief Financial Officer has certified the funds are available for the payment of the current bill list in the amount of $283,545.76. Supplemental payments in the amount of $2,780,514.22. Immersion services fees in the amount of $126.92 to be credited to the following accounts for a total of $3,64,186.90, of which $882,434 is going to Lakeland Regional High School, $1,605,943 is going to the Ringwood Board of Education.
We have a motion on the bill list.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Here. Why do you break out merchant service fees? Why isn't part of it just the...
Because the merchant service fees are a fee to banks. We break that out separately. I don't know why. It goes into a different account. So that's why it's broken out separately. So that's credit card fees and whatnot. That's what that's for.
It's always the trivial number, though, right?
Yes.
It's always... You're always carrying around $56.
Yeah, we're required to.
Very good. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call on Resolution 2018-192.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Goretty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Council members Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-193, whereas the Morse County Co-op Denville Line Painting Inc. was used for the Skyline Lakes Drive-Greenwood Lake Turnpike Intersection Stripe in contract number 2018-8. And whereas the borough engineer has submitted and recommended payment in the amount of $2,901.52 for the work completed, now therefore be resolved that Municipal Council of Ringwood hereby approves the payment in the amount of $2,901.52 to Denville Line Painting of Rockaway, New Jersey.
Can you get a motion? Mr. Martucci?
Second.
Second is O'Keefe. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Goretty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Council member Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Because the intersection was badly striped, our section of the road, and we also striped the Greenwood Lake Turnpike section, and we asked the county to reimburse us for that. We haven't heard back for that. But we felt like that intersection needed to be striped, and it's entirely not just our section. We did hold. Contract 2018-194, whereas a contract was awarded to Rhodes Safety Systems LLC using the Morse County Co-op for the 2018 Guide Rail Program 2018-6, whereas the borough engineer, Jeff, has submitted and recommends the payment in the amount of $24,059.00 for the following invoices for different areas throughout the town. Now therefore be resolved that the Municipal Council of Ringwood hereby approves the payment in the amount of $24,059.00 for the two road systems of Shamong, New Jersey, subject to the receipt of certified payroll records and their certified monthly manning report.
Take a motion, please?
I'm with.
Mr. Martucci?
Second.
Second, Mr. Noonan. Any discussion?
Do we... Are any of these amounts recovered through insurance from accidents?
Some of them, yes. Some of them... Anytime there's an accident, there's a police report, we bill the insurance companies for it, and then we schedule time for them to come out. The county roads also, we... All the county roads that have guardrails that are damaged, we send the police report to them, and they go after the insurance carriers.
So we get reimbursed for some of this?
So some of this is reimbursable, yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it has already been reimbursed. We've already collected.
Oh, excellent.
What percentage would you say that is of what we're spending on the guardrails?
I would... I don't know the percentage off my head, but I would say it's probably 80, 90 percent.
That's good to know.
Because usually, when you hit a guardrail, the car is usually still there, so the police show up. So we have evidence of their insurance bossy at that point.
Okay.
We do the same thing if they hit a stop sign, if they hit... If there's a car and there's a police report for any borough damages, we catch kids putting ruts in our grass, and the police catch them, we bill them for the restoration. So any type of work that happens, we do that.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Goretty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Council members Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Thank you all. Next on the agenda are Consent Agenda Resolutions. Resolution 2018-195, whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Ringwood has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions, now therefore be it resolved that the following resolutions on the consent agenda are hereby approved. 2018-195, Approval of Consent Agenda. 2018-196, Approval of Payroll and Payroll Transfers, month of September. 2018-197, Appointment to Sustainable Jersey Green Team Advisory Committee. 2018-198, Refund Escrow Money Upon Advice of the Board of Adjustment, Block 800.01, Lot 2. We have a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bolton? Any discussion? Anybody wish to remove any item?
I just want to make a comment on Diana Roth joining the Green Team. I'm real excited about Diana joining us. She's been a leader in the community for arts. She was instrumental in doing a lot of the productions that used to occur at St. Catherine's on a yearly basis. Right now, she's working with Azarian to find good space in that shopping center that's currently vacant to see if she can put on holiday production, if she can get it by that. Murphy's Law did go into effect. As soon as she found the perfect spot, they found a tenant. So she hasn't given up. She's still working to do that. And I think she'll be great. I'm hoping that she can get her fabulous friend, Fabiola, to also join because having a creative team on the Green Team is a way for the municipality to really grow positive outcomes from the community and have well-thought-out investments in art and culture. I think we have a lot of artists. We have a lot of great music up here. I think we should do everything we can to support them, and I think this is a great first step with Diana joining the team, as she's always been a leader in the arts and in this community.
If she could keep looking at vacant space in Azarian and bringing in other people, that'd be great.
You know what? Space I was wondering about, and this might be far-fetched, but it did occur to me. We have the convent vacant right now, and it's been sitting vacant for a long time. I don't know if the owner is up there. I mean, that summer house is a beautiful spot. If they were willing to work with the community like Azarian was to allow possibly artists to use that space to create art until they're ready to utilize it again, maybe that's something we, as council, can look into.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Goretty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Council members Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is the manager's report. I will draw your attention to the record time that we have gotten through this agenda thus far, and hand the meeting over to Mr. Heck.
And as I committed to all of you, I'm going to have a very brief report this evening because we've had a lot of meetings lately, and we've updated you on a lot of things. So Resolution 2018, I have a few resolutions this evening that we would like to consider. And one ordinance that I would need an executive session for prior to Mr. Kleemack.
Okay.
So first, Resolution 2018-199, this is... These are some housekeeping things we have to do for the Finance Department. Be resolved Municipal Council of the Borough of Ringwood here approves the submission of the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs' Division of Local Government Services Best Practices Inventory for 2018, as prepared by the Chief Financial Officer and Sub Chief Final Review. That's something that has to happen prior to our next meeting, so we'd like to have a resolution to submit it. It's something we do every year.
All right. You'll have copies of that at the next meeting.
Yep.
Mr. Martucci?
Second.
Mr. Noonan? Any discussion? Roll call, please. Resolution 2018-199.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Goretty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Council members Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
2018-200 is an amendment to some language in the Resolution for 2018-169. We want to make it read, 2018-169 be amended as follows: The salary of Nicole Langenmeyer be increased by $5,000 upon obtaining the status of registered municipal clerk, and subsequent increases will be determined by the mayor and council, by the municipal council, and the appointment of Nicole Langenmeyer as acting clerk is hereby reaffirmed and ratified retroactive to August 30, 2018. Some of the language wasn't clear enough in the top resolution, so Mr. Kleemack suggested that we just do another one down below with clearer language.
I think that all messages are understanding from August. Anybody who make a motion?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Martucci.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Goretty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Council members Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
2018-201, I'd like to talk about an executive session, as well as an introduction of ordinance in executive session. And this is for the UPSU blue-collar parking unit. After that, I would probably offer a resolution if the council is so inclined after executive session.
I got a quick question.
Yes.
How was the addiction center coming?
I'm sorry?
How was the addiction center?
Last I heard, they had just filed bonding. They did some corporate restructuring. They... So I think they're going to be starting shortly based upon the reports that we got back from their company. So hopefully, we'd like to see something happen up there instead of looking at steel.
And they did, they did sort of a new letter of credit. We reviewed it, then accepted it to guarantee their performance.
To guarantee their performance, what is that?
To guarantee the public aspects of their job. First, we have to put in a public portion, not the building, but to guarantee that if putting roadways, curbs, sewers, water lines and that, they're done correctly.
It's part of the planning board.
If they're not done correctly, this is a guarantee that we get the money to make them do it correctly, or to do it ourselves.
Yeah, they bought that property for about $6.6 million, and they took out a loan of $125 million on that property, and I haven't seen that money that they've taken out being invested in there other than that steel structure. So I'm wondering when they reord, if, you know, that money went to other projects, or if they've been able to give you an update on that.
Well, they did do a lot of subsurface work, they took a lot of buildings down, they did a lot of steel work, they did a lot of design, they probably bought the prefab units that are going in there, so...
So at least a lot of it has already been invested in that?
They put a treatment, some type of groundwater treatment in there, so they've done some work.
Okay, that's good to know.
So I don't know exactly what they've done, but that's a normal, getting the bonds is normal through the planning board process to ensure that any public improvements are covered.
Okay, good.
Okay, so do we need a resolution to go into executive session?
That's all I have for this evening. I promised I would keep it short.
All right, okay. Resolve that municipal council enter into executive session to discuss collective bargaining, to discuss collective bargaining matters with Teamsters Local 97 on their contract for 2017 to 2019. Be further resolved that minutes of the meeting be maintained and be available for public inspection upon conclusion of the matter. The public's advised that when the municipal council returns from an executive session, it may take formal action on any matter discussed therein, or may take formal action on any other matter.
Mr. Klimak, I just want to correct the resolution. Unfortunately, the Teamsters Local 97 is no longer the union representing, we're there now the UPSU blue collar. It's a little confusing, because we have two UPSUs here now, so...
So we'll delete Teamsters Local 97 and put UPSU. For the record.
Okay, I guess to go into executive session would be Resolution 2018-202. The call sounds right?
That would be the next number, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and do we have a motion for...
So moved.
Mr. Noonan?
Second.
Mr. Paredes? Roll call on the executive session?
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heck. Attorney's report. Mr. Klimak?
No report, Mr. Klimak.
Thank you, sir. General public comment, too. The second general public comment portion of the meeting. Anybody wishing to address the mayor and council, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Seeing nobody, I move to close.
Second.
Mr. Bolton moved to close, Mr. Noonan, second. Roll call on closing, second public.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Next is mayor and members of the council. Mr. Bolton, would you start us off?
Absolutely.
Take us out of here?
I'm almost like, I'm almost disoriented, it's so early. So a few things. Briefly, in addition to what Scott had said regarding the traffic pattern coming out of the shopping center, we got a grant from the Highlands Council to do a transit or a traffic study in Highlands communities towards economic development, and one of the things in our meeting with them that we had kicked around was the possibility of a traffic circle in that area, so...
A roundabout, not a circle.
Okay, I forget which one's good and which one's bad, but the good version...
Yeah, the circles are the ones that are in South Jersey that a lot of people get anxiety over, where a roundabout is something similar to what you see at Franklin Lakes down by the Market Basket, which is, you know, a lot tamer, not as complicated, not as anxiety-ridden, I would say, but something that could allow you to make that turn and also slow traffic as it goes through town to possibly go into the shopping centers, instead of feeling like you're rushing through town, that you've arrived at town.
And of course, very preliminary, but just so you know, the conversations happen, and, you know, it's obviously an area of focus.
Could I just ask, since it's a county road, are we going to have to work with the county as well?
Oh, absolutely. And at least in the preliminary conversation we had with the representatives from the county, the output from the grant was really just going to be a study on some recommendations. It wasn't actually any improvement of money or investment, so it's just sort of one step in that direction. That was, that was one of the many things that we had spoken about, you know, including trails, different things that, that funding could help us move further down the path, as it were. I had gotten some feedback from, I would say, my fellow bus riders, but they're actually earlier bus riders than myself, and New Jersey Transit had recently changed their schedule in the morning, and Ringwood is lucky in that we have express bus service to and from the city during rush hours, so we're the last stop on the way out and the first stop on the way home, which is great, with the exception of when the bus comes and you can't get on because it's full. And there is now roughly about a 30-minute wait time between buses in the morning, so if you miss the 6:08, because it's full of people from West Milford, the next one isn't until 6:24, and the temperature is dropping, and so people have been complaining to New Jersey Transit and asking us if there's anything that we could do. And I thought that it would be helpful for our residents if we could at least pass a resolution advocating that they revisit the schedule changes and perhaps the capacity of the buses that service the area, given the fact that during inclement weather, there is no place for these people to wait, you know, they just queue up in the parking lot.
Do you want me to call New Jersey Transit, see if we can explain to them about the bays, we can explain to them about a lot of different things in the dark area?
That would be great. That would be great.
I didn't know that they changed the bus schedule.
Yeah, they apparently changed it before I'm up, but I can, I can only imagine how cranky I would be if I was up and ready to go at 6 o'clock and couldn't go until 30 minutes later, and had to wait in the rain. So if we could also pass a resolution somewhere, something along the lines of the fact to, you know, whereas the New Jersey Transit bus lines are the only mass transit in our community, and whereas the last stop on the morning 196 Express is in Ringwood, and whereas recent changes to the schedule have reduced service, which increases the time to wait between buses, as well as the likelihood that Ringwood residents are not able to board their intended bus due to capacity, and whereas there are no indoor shelters during inclement weather during these nearly 30-minute waits, we respectfully request the New Jersey Transit to revisit the capacity and frequency of rush hour service to our community.
That's a motion, right?
Yeah, a motion.
I'll second.
Well, what's the bus that comes before the 6 o'clock?
There's a 5:54 before the 6:08, and there's one or two before the 5:54. Actually, I have it on my phone, and at least the first bus, I know anecdotally is a token bus only, in that it's the first bus in the morning, and it is routinely so full that sometimes it doesn't even pull into the stop. And again, not that, not that I'm heading in at that hour, but there was one time when I needed to, and somebody told me to not even count that as a, as a real bus. So there is a 4, oh, no, there is a 5:24, a 5:54, then a 6:09, 6:24, and then the frequency increases to 6:36, 6:48, 7 o'clock, so on.
You have, you have that written down, that Nicole be able to get accurate reflection of that? That would be Resolution 2018-203. You've made that motion. Mr. O'Keefe, seconded. Any further discussion on requesting NJ Transit look at the bus scheduling up in our parking lot? No discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmember Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bolton, we'll also have our police department drive by the parking lot to make sure that everyone there that is catching that bus has got a parking sticker to make sure that West Milford's not filling up our parking lot without having permits, and that might free up some spaces for Ringwood residents.
Appreciate that, too. By way of more commercials, the library is having a strategic planning session this Friday at the library at 6:30, so 6:30 to 8:00, working towards the vision for the library as an important part of our community going forward, and they wanted to invite the community to join that discussion. There's also going to be Friday, November 16th, they're having a Autumn Leaves Casually Elegant Evening at Berta Chateau, which is always a lovely time, so be sure to check that out. And then two or three more commercials. Cup Saw Lake is having its Haunted Hilli coming up on Sunday, the 28th. It's a lot of fun, people dress up in costumes and run around the lake. It's a, it's a good time and a good fundraiser, and after you burn all those calories on Sunday morning, you can support the ambulance corps by going to their wine tasting event at Tree Tavern. So that's a lot of fun to be had on the 28th. And then also, the ambulance corps is having a dine to donate tomorrow at Lakeside Diner from 4 to 9 o'clock. So they also do takeout. And that's all the stuff I'm shelling for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton.
Mr. Paredes?
Yes. I delayed my time to ride earlier, you knew that. Ringwood's needs education facilities for the, for the, for the community, and prepares them to university and college for better education. Office space has started aside in Passaic County, also in the state of New Jersey, means all ages, all agencies to get, get the states economy, everything in the state, 100%, 100% better, 100% better.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Mark.
I just want to say, I've been hearing from many people that the roads are more slippery than ever. I don't know, I feel like the north side of my house is greener than ever as well, and it's just like this lack of sun that we've been having, I think the roads probably are actually pretty slippery out there. Be careful, slow down. I'd say, see it on Facebook, hear it from neighbors, watch out, careful. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Noonan?
I want to thank Jason Elkin and his team from the Center for Food Action Ring and Pugna Walk. Excellent, excellent charity that they put untold number of hours in every single year, take care of tremendous amount of families. I think it's actually wonderful. Also, I know the town has the trunk or treat coming up, and yeah, Halloween's coming up, so be careful of the kids, the leaves will fall, and the road's a little slippery, so be cautious out there. Thank you.
Councilman Davison?
Well, I've been out of state the last six days, so I really don't have anything to report. I wish I could give you some county information, but I haven't been down there either, so...
It's never good news there.
Enjoy hearing what I heard tonight, though. I'll pass it on.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Sure, I'd like to give everybody an update on what the green team has been up to. They're doing a green challenge. One of the things that they're asking the community to do is to skip the straw. We were at the farmer's market at Community Day. We got quite a few signatures from the people that attended those events. I don't know if everyone knows, but it takes 200 years for a straw to decompose, and each year, a million seabirds and marine animals die from ingesting plastic. So this is something we're asking people to do voluntarily. I passed around a pledge to all the council members, I think most of them took it this evening, and if you haven't had an opportunity to take the pledge, feel free to go to Sustainable Ringwood, our Facebook page, where you can take the pledge, and once we achieve 10% of the community participating, the green team will have 10 additional points to go towards certification. We're also going to our local businesses to talk about alternatives to plastic straws such as Ardmark, which is a great company that's been producing paper straws since 1888 in the United States. We also contacted the Ringwood schools, and we're happy to report that the Ringwood schools have already given up plastic straws and have gone to paper. Michaela Schwab did an event on September 21st with a science teacher at Ryerson for all of our sixth graders to help them understand the need for conservation and the effect that plastic has on our environment. The other thing I'd like to talk about is I had Nicole make these great copies for each of you, to see all the wonderful people who have volunteered to be part of the Economic Develop, I mean, the Economic Development Commission, which we hope to get revitalized, if not at this meeting, at the next meeting. We have Tom McGowan, Kristin Holton, who works down at the county with Deborah Hoffman, Robert Buizio, Orley Steinberg, who has been in business in our community for many years now, Tom Knorphy, Matt Van Allen from Maggie's, Ned Clausen, who many of you have heard of and just had a book published, and Mitch Kahn, who is somebody who has served and will previously on the EDC, and will be a great person to help steer us as we get it up and running again. So I hope you'd all take a little time to review these, thanking Nicole for getting everybody a copy, and I hope at our next meeting, we can revitalize it and get a meeting on a monthly basis. So I think that's it. One, one other thing, I know that a few months back, we got a grant from Passaic County about litter abatement for about $27,000, was that correct? There was, something came for litter abatement.
Oh, the tonnage grant? The tonnage grant, not the county. That's the state tonnage.
Oh, that's not, oh, that's from the state. So I'm wondering if any of that is being utilized for our county roads to pick up garbage, because Ringwood Avenue, Slutzburg Road, a lot of these roads are starting to look a little shabby, and with the beautiful fall season and lots of people coming up to visit our community, it would be great if we could get something happening there to clean up the litter that's on the streets?
We use the, we use that funding for many of the recycling and litter programs that we currently have. We've asked the county to come up, the sheriff's program came up for years and years cleaning up the roads.
Right, in the past, I've seen them.
Often, we have the DBW go out there and clean them up a couple times a year, because, but the county roads, we're trying to get the county to get up here and clean up the roads, it's bad. We increased all of our fines for people who throw garbage out the window.
Right.
We put new signs up, and we've done a lot of that, but we already use a lot of the tonnage grant for furthering our recycling program and our cleanup programs now. Some of that money comes to help the people who go out there and clean up with bags and Some of that money comes to help the people who go out there and clean up with bags and whatnot, Caring for Ringwood Days. All those kind of things are used for those funds, so we can see if there's anything left to do.
Maybe a second Ringwood Caring Day, and that would be appropriate at this time?
It would be really appropriate if the county came up and maybe their DBW could come up. I mean, our guys do it, and all of us pay for that, but maybe the county DBW could come up.
Yeah, I recently ran into somebody that was picking up garbage, I stopped to thank him. He was actually from Allendale. He came up to clear Ringwood Avenue in front of the parks.
I spoke with a resident who wants to put a task force together, he actually lives in Wantacue.
Oh, really?
Skyline Drive, part of Skyline Drive is in Wantacue.
Yes.
And so he's, I told him that if, in fact, he was going to do some type of cleanup day, I would make sure that we had vests and bags, and I'd have him escorted with a DBW or a police officer to make sure that they're safe. Because as you know, Skyline Drive and these county roads...
Yeah, a lot of these roads we're talking about going out to do yourself would be dangerous. That's why I'm hoping the county could do something.
And that's why it's really great of the sheriff's office to come, because they have the police car, and, you know, it's a county road, and the sheriffs could protect these individuals, and that's why it would be so much better if they brought the prisoners back up and did that, so...
Have you reached out to them recently? Is there anything we can do as a council to reach out to them?
I would certainly have all of you call down to the county and see what you can do. I've reached out to them, Helen reaches out to them on a regular basis. You know, one of the officers who was in charge of it years ago lived in Ringwood for years, and so he grew up here, and so he made sure that we got them. But I think the problem is, they don't have the staffing that they used to have, and they don't have, quite frankly, with bail reform, they tell us they don't have the prisoners that are eligible to go out and do that kind of stuff anymore.
Right, there's been a lot of different changes down there that might have impacted it.
But unfortunately, this is a, you know, we're a green community, we do our part, and we're just asking everybody else to do their part. You know, when we see somebody throw a bag out the window, I hire myself or the DBW go and look through that garbage to see if we can get a name on it and send them a fine to get them to stop doing that kind of stuff.
Yeah, even up by Alpoa there, Clubhouse up on Hilltop, I walked up there the other day. I saw bags of garbage just dumped up there. I don't know who's doing it or why it's happening, I don't know if somebody, you know, goes up there periodically to check on it, but it seems where people can, they're just, the whole bag is dumped there.
We unfortunately don't have the resources to do the county roads all the time.
Right.
Because we've diminished our staff here, and we just don't have those kind of resources. But we're going to get out there again, I talked to the guys, our road program is going to be wrapping up in the next week or so, maybe we can get out there and do some. But it's a lot of miles of road that has to be taken care of.
No doubt about it.
Sorry, I've got like three competing ideas. From the county perspective, are the prisoners the only option, or their DPW can come and do it just as well as us?
Well, their DPW can do it just like our DPW does it.
Well, maybe they can fund our DPW doing some of the work if they can't get anyone up here to do it?
When they can do what?
Make some monetary thing towards our DPW.
Anything that would help. I would suggest that all of you get folks called down there, because the people we call are the people that have run the program for many, many years. But if you have some contacts in the county, by all means, you know, give them a call. We're going to continue to, but...
In my mind, and it's half, I don't mean it glib, because I was thinking, you know, fall pickup, and I'm walking, and the season, it's Halloween, Halloween parade, we could all wear costumes and clean up Ringwood Ave. We could combine it with the Hunger Walk, and actually like walk somewhere and...
Close the road?
I mean, obviously not on this short notice, but make it a combined...
I would encourage all of you, if you're going to do that, we're going to wear safety vests, and we're going to, you know, costumes might not be the best, and when you're walking through the woods and pulling things...
Break costumes.
Just to put the traffic off.
Tripping in holes and branches and logs, and might not be the best thing for a costume, but certainly a safety vest would be appropriate.
That's it?
Thank you.
Mr. Martucci?
Yeah, I have two items. Staying on topic, I'd like to give kudos to a woman, don't know her name. Every day when I go to work on Compton Town Road, brain is shine, I see her picking up litter. And her bag is pretty full, so, but every day around quarter to eight, she's on Compton Town Road, coming up both sides and picking up litter, and I think that's fantastic. The second thing, you know, I've talked about it before. This involving cars speeding, tailgating. Part of this is, you know, just people giving common courtesy. You notice when you're trying to pull on Skyline Drive, and you got to spot people speed up sometimes. It's, everybody's in a mad rush, you're anonymous in the car. So it's, that seems to be getting worse, where people don't give you common courtesy, and going to work in the morning, coming home at night, everybody's kind of cutting in all over the place. And continued tailgating, and which I had again tonight coming up to the council meeting. Yeah, it's something that people got to kind of look out for themselves. Because you could be there, the police could be there, and it keeps on going on. So I get...
And Mr. Martucci?
Can I add just one thing there, mayor?
Certainly.
Unless you are thinking of it, congratulations to the Lakeland varsity field hockey team prevailing this year as the Passaic County champions. In a hard-fought game on Saturday down in Wayne Hills, we defeated West Milford after facing them last year in the finals also. Congratulations, girls, it was a wonderful game to watch, it was a 1-0 contest, and it was just, it was a great game to watch. Congratulations.
Yeah. And can I add just one thing? I just want to make one final plug for the Sober Fest, which is coming up this October 20th. It's a great opportunity for everyone, not just those who are getting sober, but everyone to go out and have a natural high, doing great things out in the community. Spring Lake is a great place to go ziplining and everything else. So I hope people come out and support the Sober Fest, they do a lot of good in our community.
Good.
And while we're doing interruptions...
I think that concludes our agenda, we will adjourn to executive session.
Scott, what's the threshold for filing a litter complaint? Like if somebody sees, like what do you have to get? And license plate?